Okay. Good evening. My name's Joe Stornowski. I'm Chair of the Rockport Planning Board, and we have a quorum for this evening's meeting. So I'm going to officially call this meeting to order at 5:35 PM on November 3rd.
Joe, just a technical thing. You have to seat me.
I do.
Oh, okay.
Well, you're right. I probably should have done that before I established the quorum, but I would like to seat John Veman, who is an alternate, as a full voting member this evening. And so John will be the fourth to constitute our quorum. Okay, so we've got a fairly abbreviated meeting this evening in that we don't have formal applications before us, so I won't go through my full opening remarks as I typically do. What we have this evening are two items on the agenda, in addition to some administrative business. Those two items are the finding of facts and conclusions for two projects that we previously reviewed in a July 28th meeting and a September 22nd meeting. And so the purpose of this evening's meeting is just to review those amongst the board members. Because there is no additional material being presented, no additional information being entered into the agenda, we're not going to be receiving public comment this evening, and we'll just be reviewing the facts that we previously had put together, finding of facts. So first one that we will do is the finding of facts, conclusion of law for HFTF LLC site plan application. And that was approved on July 28th and pending approval of the finding of facts. So if the board members would please go to that document. And you're putting that up on the screen all the way around. Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay, so the way that we review these documents within the planning board is there's no discussion amongst board members outside of this meeting. The board members individually go in, review the document, and provide their input as to changes that they would like to see made to the document. So the document we have before us this evening is the document reviewed by the board members and highlighted, I think in multiple colors, but in this case you can see some red there. There are some modifications to the document. And so what I'd like to do with the board members, I believe this document is, yes, 11 pages. Let's go through one page at a time, and if any one amongst the board disagrees with any of the comments that were made there and would like to either revert or modify them differently, or if you have some minor comments at this point, then we'll accept those and go on. So we'll do one page at a time.
Can I just ask some general questions?
Sure, Tom.
Is this the way that we will be doing plan reviews in future?
Okay, so I'll let Orion comment on this after I make just a few brief comments, and that is that as long as I've been on the board, and there are probably other individuals in the audience that have been on this planning board, except for a few occasions in the last several years, I have not found in any of the historical documents, finding of fact documents. That is apparently, according to our counsel, not the correct way to do it. And so for projects, we should be doing a finding of fact document, and I've been told it should be done on each application that we review.
Okay, so given that, is that so?
You want to add to that?
That's true, and to your point, the way you've been reviewing them, that won't change. How you have been reviewing them, that won't change. It's just in the past, you've taken minutes and you've kind of beefed them up, thinking that that's your findings of facts. And in fact, it just needs to be documented in this style of document. So the minutes have multiple applications in them, so we'll be pulling all that out. You'll have one findings of facts for each application. So how you review them at each meeting, that's the same, that doesn't change. The flow, same, it's just the documenting will change.
Okay, so we have had, given that background, we have had discussions in the past about what should constitute the level of detail in the minutes. And we've had some issues with just the formatting and grammatical correctness and so forth of the minutes. I would submit that if this is what we need, this layperson outside the board is not qualified to do what we need.
So the findings of facts, yeah.
Yeah, and this is more detailed than ever our minutes were considered to be.
I will be typing up all of those unless it's an application that's far greater than anything we've ever seen, then we'll have legal counsel that'll be involved in that project, and they'll be typing them up. But for the most part, I will be typing these up for the board, but we'll still have minutes, and the recording secretary will be taking care of the minutes.
Okay, okay. Because this is far more detailed than anything that we've done to date.
Yes, I think there's a lot of discussion required on that, and we're going to go through on the board a learning process in this. So as not to hold up the individuals here.
Oh, no, let's go.
No, I respect that you made those comments, and that's good, Tom. Let's go ahead through these documents the way they are. They're in significant detail. And then when we go through our other business, I think there needs to be some additional discussion about a process by which we even generate these minutes. Who does it, how we do it? Because I would have to say for myself, this was pretty painful in going through this level of detail from a July 28th meeting. And so I actually went back, I listened to the videos to verify that the accuracy of these documents was correct.
Yeah, I can see the work in there.
It took a lot of time, yes.
And just for future meetings, so you'll be getting in these applications, it'll be a format, so similar to how we already do this, so you'll understand, like, all right, this is kind of how it's going to be populated, and then at the next meeting, it'll be populated with the information, and then, you know, we'll tweak the formatting as we go along.
Okay, so we'll talk more about the process in the other section. Let's continue on with these, though. Very good point, Tom. Thank you. Okay, so with that, on the HFTF finding of facts, I'm on page one.
Is everyone okay with the comments there? Why don't you just check in when you're done going through that?
I'll add, Joe, that I did go through this as well prior to this meeting, so this isn't the first time I'm reviewing it.
Yeah, I did two, but I didn't make, I didn't even try to make changes.
Yeah, there's a lot there, yeah.
Yeah, I did, all my comments are on the online version of this, so. So nothing on page one for me, Joe. That isn't already in there.
Jeff, okay.
I'm okay.
Tom's okay, okay. Page two. And so Orion, while we're doing this, the original copy without the board's notes were posted on the town website.
The original copy, yes. The draft version, I didn't, that was posted on the website, yes.
Correct, and so the only difference between this and the version that was posted are the comments that are highlighted.
That is correct.
Okay, some grammatical, some of substance. Okay, page two. There is a note there about.
Site walk.
Yeah, site walk, and just making note of that fact. It sounds like a reasonable suggestion. I think we should put in there that a site walk was conducted on, I guess it was July 28th prior to the meeting.
Further down, paragraph number three, the second paragraph in item number three. The wording needs to be adjusted. It just says, "The board decided this would be a requirement to satisfy this concern." I think it just needs to say condition of approval.
Okay, let's catch up to where you are. Third paragraph.
It's number three, second paragraph under number three.
I think you're not going to be too far.
Because we're looking at electronic, Joe, versus, huh?
You're on this one. We're on Hope for the Future.
No, are we on?
Yeah, we're on Hope for the Future. That's what I just announced, yeah.
All right, I thought you said K wireless.
No, sorry. Orion, can we just make a note there of the fact that we did take a site walk?
Yes.
On July 28th. Can you replace that red insert there?
Hang on, let me get caught up to you guys here. I thought you said we were doing the wireless thing first, Joe.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. And you could delete the red.
Okay, I'm caught up. This is page two.
You're on page two with us?
Yes, we were going to add the site walk.
Yes, we did.
That was my comment online, yep.
Doesn't look like there's any other changes besides that on this page two.
Yep.
Jeff?
I'm okay.
Tom? And John, you're okay, okay. Let's go to page three.
And page three on the electronic documents, where's the break, Joe? I'm just trying to make sure.
I'm not going to interrupt with grammatical changes at this point.
Thanks.
Let's just continue.
All right, the top of page three starts with the planning board. Is that, am I in the right space here? Chair Stornowski asked the board.
Yeah.
This is the page break?
Just type in an ED.
Okay.
Ask the board.
You're just putting in asked.
Asked.
ED, yeah.
Need to delete a space back.
I couldn't seem to, but I'll try again.
That's right, well, that space can be taken care of later. All right, so on page three. Why is the vote highlighted, is it highlighted on this document here also? The vote at the bottom of page three.
Jeff had a comment about it. He wanted to know if we needed to put motioned by, seconded by, so I've got a comment to it. No, it's not a requirement to it. Some towns have done it. In the town of Brunswick, that's how they do it. We'll leave it up to y'all.
The KJK.
KJK, I did put it in there so we could see it.
Again, we need to talk about this because it's redundant also between the minutes and the finding of facts. I don't know if it needs to be. I think as long as we're consistent throughout this document, is that okay? Again, we're.
And throughout the process. I mean, I, yeah, we can talk about more.
We're coming up a learning curve here, yeah.
We can talk a bit more.
Okay, so that vote, as it stands, is correct, and it was just a question as to whether or not we needed to add the motions, which I believe are included in the minutes.
They are.
So would you be okay?
I'm okay either way.
Okay.
It's more of a process question.
You're right, and we got to come to that process, but we can do that later on when we talk about process. For this, though, you're okay with this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so let's take that highlight and that comment off then. That's resolved. I don't know if that affects the, that's not going to affect, there we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else on page three?
Nope.
John, okay?
I'm good.
Tom?
It's a little tricky because I'm not necessarily looking at the redline version of.
Yeah, we're all following this one.
Yeah, okay. I'm following that on the town website, too, and it's.
Tom, you could do a three.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to page four. I actually see no changes on page four at all. So since there are no changes, I would propose that we would move on to page five.
Sounds good.
Okay. Page five. John, you okay? You with us?
This is getting squirrely here for, where's the top of page four on that thing?
Top of page five.
Top of page five, okay.
So it's going to read right here.
This one right here?
Okay. So my, top of page five, it'd be good if we maybe reference what the top of page five starts with on the document here. So top of your page five is the board discussed. Is that it, right there?
Yes.
Okay. So the top of page five, as it's shown on the screen, is the board discussed the aforementioned requirements. That's where five starts.
The problem, Joe, I can't read that because of my contacts. That's the problem I'm having. It's getting, it's very fuzzy.
Okay, can you look at this document on your PC screen?
That's what I'm trying to do, but you keep moving that, so I'm trying to keep up with that.
Okay, let's pause, let you catch up. Let's pause here.
Where are we, 1304, two? And then I made a lot of written comments on the paper version, which doesn't correspond to anything electronically.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're with us on page five?
Yep.
Okay, so page five, there's a few minor, one minor comment there, added word material. Anyone have an issue on, anything on page five? Jeff, okay.
Okay.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Tom's okay. John?
See where you are here.
Page five starts with.
Page five is three screens, Joe, so. All right, we're right here. Okay, got it. Yep, okay. Good, Joe.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, you're caught up with us here? Okay. Okay, so page five is good. Let's move on to page six. A little bit more changes there. Orion, if you could just correct the spelling of definition. There's an extra I in there. There should be an I in there before the T. Yeah, there, thank you. Is residential spelled correctly?
It is no.
No, take an I out. That was probably the one that was missing out of the other one. The I after the, after D comes out of residential in conclusions. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Jeff, okay, with six?
I'm okay with it. Should we discuss it?
Sure, if you have something that you'd like to speak about, yes.
Well, this is, this is the page wherein there's the meat by which there's a appeal. So does it merit more discussion to add to the discussion that we had in July?
I never received a letter from ZBA requesting anything specific.
So, yeah, they were a little confused on how they needed to do it because they didn't have the findings of facts to really review to ask for more information, so to use for findings of facts.
All I took it as we needed to do a finding of facts.
Yeah.
And I didn't get any requests.
Okay.
From anyone. Now, do you feel?
We were prompted to review that information, and I felt that was in preparation of this discussion, but if that's not the case, then.
Do you, do you feel anything is needed for this, in addition to?
Let's be clear. Are you asking the question, does this document what was discussed in July?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Does this document what was discussed in July?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything that we should consider beyond that?
I don't believe so.
Do you believe so?
If it's not called for, then no. I wouldn't want to add more, I mean, this is essentially like a deluxe version of the meeting minutes then, so I don't want to add things that didn't happen to.
I would like to make a comment on this, too.
Okay.
This is supposed to be a reflection of the record, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we cannot add or reduce new information.
In the finding of facts.
In here.
That sounds appropriate to me.
Only if, Jeff, in your recollection of the meeting, there was something that needs to be in here, I think.
Right, again, based on the, what was discussed at the time.
Yeah, if these don't, if there's a gap here, then, or a misstatement, then we need to correct it.
And so I could say the comments that I added in blue are based on reviewing the video, and that's all.
Right.
Okay, so based on that set of guidelines, do you have any?
No color on the page.
You're set with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with page six. Tom?
I understand what Jeff is talking about.
Yeah, I do understand. I recognize your concern there.
Yeah.
But in the finding of facts, it's documenting what was stated in that meeting.
I think this is accurate.
Okay. John? You're okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so page six is fine, and so we should use those same guidelines certainly throughout all of this document and the subsequent document on the other project that we deal with. It's a reflection of what was discussed in the meeting. Page seven. Looks like some language cleanup on this, just to make it a little bit easier to read.
That's good.
Page seven, Jeff?
That's good.
Good. Tom? You say you need more time?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
John's good, okay. Page eight starts with conclusion is the first word on top there, with the vote.
Yeah, I just have a, we don't want to go into the wording, do we?
Unless there's something that causes a misinterpretation or misunderstanding of what was stated.
Well, grammatically, this is totally incorrect. The section is 1305 is not compliant. It's the project that is compliant with section 1305.
Okay, where are you reading?
That's right at the top, right after following conclusion. Based on the above information and submitted application materials.
How should it read?
It should be, "The board finds the plan, the project," what are we calling it?
The project.
The app.
The application.
The application.
Compliant with section 1305 is what it should say.
Yes.
You're right. Absolutely correct.
That's, it's in the first sentence there, Orion.
Yeah, Orion, now you don't need the project of.
Yeah, take out the project of, the, just the application. The application is compliant with the section or chapter 1305. Yeah, section 1305 is fine.
And then remove the first half or the last half of the prior sentence.
That?
Oh, I see what you're doing.
Yeah.
Does that work? Based on the above information, the board finds the application is compliant with section 1305?
Yeah. I think that's what I was trying to say, but I didn't quite.
Yep.
Get the statement correctly. Good catch, Tom. Okay, finish with page seven. Let's move on to page eight. Are there any changes on page eight? It doesn't look like it. Okay, seeing no changes, anyone have anything else they want to?
What is that section XX in the blue?
You're on next page, nine?
Oh, yes, I am. I thought we were on nine.
That was a reference to.
Yeah.
The section that was to waive.
That's me, and that's, is it chapter 1300 where that waiver ability authority is granted for that right to early? I remember, I read through the, I went through the video, and I missed when I was looking at it what the section number was.
Jeff, are you finding it?
I'm looking for it because it's also in one of the, is it 13?
Beginning of 1300?
808. No, 1306?
I want to say 1306. Is that what it says?
Yeah, it's 1306.
Okay.
Correct the first sentence of 1306, yeah. Okay.
All right, anything else down that page, Orion?
No.
That's it, right there.
So that was page eight.
Nine.
Nine? Nine.
Nine.
Jeff, okay? Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Page nine, okay, move on to page 10. And there are no changes on page 10.
No, it's good.
So everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Transportation is spelled incorrectly on the last page. Should be a T. Transport.
That's interesting, that word.
I don't know why that didn't come up at the spell check, yeah. Okay. Okay. Last chance, anyone have anything anywhere through the document?
There's another page that just says appendix on it.
Yeah, so that, I'm going to attach the application with it so that the findings of facts rides with the application. So that's all that's going to be.
The application, does it, I mean, does it include all of the matter that is associated with our review?
Yeah.
So like letters from?
So the application that was submitted that was reviewed.
Letters from a butterer's and?
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole thing goes.
Hang on just a second, I'm checking something, Joe. Hang on just a second, I'm checking something, Joe.
The fact that we are just now looking at and approving these findings of fact, should you say dated this twenty eighth of July?
So, when this is signed, it will be dated the date that it's signed.
That's all I was asking.
Yeah, there's a block there for that.
Yeah, that's all I was asking.
So that, that date is just the approval date that y'all gave it, and then the findings of facts will have the date of today?
I'm sorry?
So the date there, the twentieth day of July, that, that's the date that was approved. The, the plan was approved.
Yeah, that, that statement does look odd there.
I see what you're saying.
Stands by itself. What's, what does it go with?
It goes with the final decision, so we can.
That should be up on the top, and it probably was, wasn't it? Uh, it does say twenty eighth of July on the very top, site plan decision.
Oh, I see what you're saying. There's a date line on the signature.
There's a date line when you sign it. I don't know why that other date line is in there.
I can remove it.
Is there a need for it? Does it serve a purpose?
I, I just, it's modeled in another findings of facts that I used to model this off of, so, yeah.
Actually, it's, it's appended to the title on the first page, so.
So I think you're supporting that it could be removed, that, that sentence there? Yeah, I would suggest we remove that. It's confusing.
Okay.
I just have one little net, Joe. It's back on page three.
Okay.
And it's paraphrasing Ms. Prim. And it says that she said this will not be transient housing, but low-income housing. And I was wondering if those were her words or if she meant to say affordable housing.
Those were the words that were stated at the meeting that I typed up.
Okay. I, I did, actually, I saw that too, and I was going to go back and check that in the video. I never did, so I had that same question. So Orion's saying he's verified that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no further questions, then the board would vote that this finding of facts accurately represents what was discussed and found at the meeting on July twenty eighth. That would be.
Chairman, may I be heard just briefly?
Do you have additional information to present? Or what, what is it that you'd like to address?
I think, I will, I'd like to address the findings of fact just briefly, but I have.
Is it about the accuracy of the finding of facts?
I'm sorry?
The accuracy? This is just a documentation of what we did in the previous meeting?
It's, it's not a question of the accuracy of the findings of fact. It's a, in this case, it's a question of the completeness of the findings of fact. I'm asking first.
Okay, could you please step up to the podium, sir, so that everyone can hear you?
Actually, that podium, we, we canceled. It's good?
It's good.
Never mind.
So please limit it to if you think there's something that's not complete, sir, if you would please. Again, this is just a documentation the board is reviewing of what was decided at the July twenty eighth meeting. We're not open for new evidence or new information.
Well, as I understand it, as a participant in the.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Excuse me, yes, Anthony Mury, and I represent a number of the neighbors as well as the abutting neighbors.
Okay.
Directly abutting neighbors.
Okay, where do you think it's not accurate?
It, it's, it's not accurate in the sense that I think that the, that this board has the ability to, not simply to recreate what it thinks to have been its findings of fact, but rather to make appropriate findings of fact, having now been asked to do so. The first order that came forth from this, this board was skeletal, didn't have any findings of fact. As I understand, what you've asked, been asked to do is to, is to make them. The principal thing that is missing in the findings of fact that you've just reviewed is any indication as to whether and what this board determined with respect to the proposed uses of this facility. And the, the really surprising aspect of that is that, as we said in our, our appeal complaint, the surprising aspect of it is that the central question that the board is designated with responsibility to address, central question is one of use. What are the uses that the applicant intends to put the place to? That has never been explored, except by the applicant itself, and that statement by the applicant has been completely ignored, frankly. The applicant presented a rather detailed, but one-page statement of its intended uses of this property. There has been, there, there is no reference to that statement or to any of those uses in these findings of fact. Yes, you are to, it seems to me that your mission here is to hew closely to the record, but the record contains an elaborate statement of use or potential use by the applicant itself. And, and, and so I think that as to those, you are free to decide whether they are to be part of your findings of fact. If you'd like me to be specific about what document I'm talking about, I will, but I think most of the people in this room, at least in the audience, know what document I'm talking about.
Okay, so as I understand it, your concern is about the board's determination and documentation in the finding of facts of the uses of the property that were discussed in the July twenty eighth meeting. Is that correct? The uses?
I'm, I'm, the, the uses of the property have been discussed in a series of hearings of this board. Two, two hearings, I shouldn't say a series. Two hearings of this board and two separate submissions by the applicant with respect to use. Indeed, they are entitled statements of use, and one of them, the second of them, the one that accompanied the July application, is skeletal. It says very little. I can point you to it if you'd like.
We're getting into opinion here, Joe, so.
Okay, I think I know where you're pointing to, and we'll go back and we'll review that in our finding of facts and determine if we think that is sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, board member. So as you just heard, a member of the public, you could take your seat if you'd like, has, has suggested that we have not satisfactorily documented the discussion that surrounded the use of the property. And I think that would be in, in chapter nine hundred and the findings that we made at that meeting regarding chapter nine hundred and the uses that are allowed in this particular zone. So if we could go back to that, I think it's like page four or five, Orion?
Six.
Six? Right there. Okay. So I believe that this section here, nine hundred, if you could just scroll up a little bit, where we talk about that, is the section that talks about, and it does specifically state, the uses of this property. So I, in, in response to this issue raised by a member of the public, I think it's worthwhile to just go back through these paragraphs and this section and make sure that we believe that this accurately documents what was discussed during that meeting. So the first paragraph where it starts with the purpose, just overviews and outlines what the, the allowed uses are in this district. This is in the nine oh seven district. I do recall that we had gone through those section nine hundred tables when we reviewed this at the July meeting. It talks about the fact that a residential multifamily facility is permitted in the nine oh seven district. But then, as we're going to see in the next paragraph, there was discussion about what was a suitable definition of the use of the property. Okay, so if I go down now to the next paragraph and the conclusion paragraph, the board did specifically bring up and discuss the various types of housing units that are defined in chapter three hundred of the, the land use ordinance. And there were a couple of categories that this could have been classified as, and we did point to and look at those definitions in chapter three hundred. I know myself, I did go through those in detail before the meeting on July twenty eighth. And it's documented here in the conclusion section that as a result of that, that it was determined that the project most closely met the definition of a residential multifamily dwelling. Go ahead.
Question, did, did any of the public comments that we received prior to the meeting or during the meeting address this question? Whether this was an appropriate use for the zone?
I don't know, but we go back and look at that, those public comments. We could take a look at that. Those are available online.
And what would, what would be, what would you hear there, Jeff, that would impact these findings of fact?
Well, I'm.
So, so you're asking, how would you react to it if you found something either for or against? Is that correct?
Well, I'm just wondering how it would change.
Well, what I'm recalling, and I didn't go back and look at the video of the meeting, but I'm recalling that the discussion in determining that it was multifamily was based on the application itself, calling itself multifamily housing. I think it was Joe specifically that raised the discussion point of the different definitions of multifamily housing or, or what it could be under the, the land use group types.
I did raise that, yes.
And that multifamily housing was the most appropriate, but I could not remember if that was in reflection on any comments that were made from the public.
Well, one of the things that I heard in the comments was there was concerns about the types of, the perceptions of the types of people that would be residing in the facility, which has nothing to do with the use.
Right.
Yeah, that's not relevant to the use.
I know. That's what I, and that's kind of where I was going with it, so.
Right. Yeah, so I, in here, only documented or attempted to document what was in the meeting, even though I considered this in advance of the meeting and looked at the various definitions. I did bring this up during the meeting. I did talk, as you suggested, I did talk about the different definitions of housing there. And based on that, I asked the board if they did agree with me that it most closely met the definition of residential housing. And I, in the video, as I recall that I reviewed, there was no objection amongst the board. Everyone did agree it was multifamily.
I remember coming to that conclusion. That's not part of what we need to note, but I remember coming to that conclusion.
Right.
We voted on it.
Right.
And, and again, it's not rocket science. You know, it was, it was, you know, it looked like a multifamily residential unit.
More than any other descriptions.
Any other description. It, it talked like one, it walked like one.
Okay, so again, we don't want to revisit this, the decision. What we want to do is make sure that we've documented properly what the discussion was that we had there in enough detail to capture the essence of that conversation in the notes here, in the finding of facts. Have we, do you feel?
I think we've addressed it.
Or is, are there other points in that discussion that we need to go back and include?
Not that rise to the level of notation.
I think it's pretty clear here that we discussed it in that meeting. We discussed the definitions in chapter three hundred, as we noted here. And based on those, we believe that it most closely matched the definition of residential multifamily. All of those definitions are not completely black and white the way they are written in the land use ordinance. But using our judgment and reading through all of those, we picked the one that we believe it most closely fit with. And that's what it states here. So is there anything that we feel that we need to modify with respect to the use, uses of the property in this finding of facts? Jeff, anything you feel you need to, you're good. Tom, clear?
I, yeah, I think so. I would have to go back and look at some, I would have to look, in order to address what you were talking about earlier, I would have to go back and look at the letters and testimony from people who presented at the meeting.
Yeah, it was my recollection that we weren't addressing comments specifically, but that we were essentially going through the requirements of section nine hundred.
Yeah. And that's, and that's, that's what I feel.
Yeah, at least for myself, I could say that I wasn't driven by any public input. I was driven by looking at the proper definition in advance of the meeting. And that was why I brought it up.
Correct.
John?
You said it better than I could say it, Joe.
Okay. Okay, so the board feels that this section does sufficiently document the discussion that we had regarding the use of the property, and we believe that it's sufficient the way it is. So with that, I'd like to put forward a, someone have a motion put forward to accept the finding of facts the way that they are modified with the changes that we've reviewed, amended with the changes we've reviewed tonight.
I'll move to accept the finding of facts as reviewed and amended this evening.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tom. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, four zero zero. Okay, so those finding of facts are approved as being an accurate document of the record. And so with that, we'll move on to.
Before we do that, the housekeeping of it is I need a motion by the board to allow Joe, the chair, to sign this document.
That requires a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to have Joe sign this document.
There you go.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, four zero zero.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to the KJK.
Yeah. Do that.
All right. Alrighty.
Now we're on the wireless.
Yeah, okay, now we're on the wireless, John. You got that one? You, you want to bring it up on your screen first? Yeah, and so.
I also have a computer problem, so.
Before we get started here with this one, I, I'll admit as being guilty here for marking this one up pretty significantly, so much so that I didn't want to taint the, the original document, and so I actually posted my comments in a separate document that was online. I saw that, what I, what I did do though was I used the document that was already modified as my baseline and added my comments to that. And I see that Jeff actually looked at my document this afternoon also.
Yes.
Yeah.
I said your name, but I figured it was, it was forked from the original, so.
Yeah. So I just had a little bit of a hard time reading through that first original document. And again, this was pretty painful, and then I spent a lot of time going through the video and reading on a screen alongside of it, the, the finding of facts, which I don't want to do again, but it was a painful process.
Yeah.
Some of these things were to make it more clear, some of these things I thought were missing but were relevant, that were stated in the, the video. So has, when other board members have reviewed it, have you had a chance to look through what I did, my modifications?
No, I went through before you got there.
Okay.
Man, did you go through.
I think you only got through like the first page or so when you said you.
I got through a fair bit of it, but, you know, this, it was getting to the point of.
I read through draft two.
You read the draft, not mine?
No, your draft.
Oh, my draft. Okay, so you read my draft, Jeff read my draft, John has not. So how do we want to handle this? You need to have some sufficient time here to be able to review this, John?
I can go through it pretty quickly. I don't worry about that.
Okay. All right, so well, let's do this again, page by page. We're on page one here, I assume. It looks like, yeah, one of thirteen. So. We'll let John take his time and read through this and see if there's any additional comments he wants to add or delete.
I'm just seeing that surrounded by mature deciduous trees with an average blah blah blah, as well as conifer. I mean, it, it was a pretty good mix of trees, I thought we determined that were going to defoliate during the.
Right, right.
So it almost sounds like it's the reverse, but that's. So it almost sounds like it's the reverse, but that's just, I'm nitpicking now, so.
And so again, this is just a, you know, just a documentation of the fact of what they mentioned. They did have that detail and talked about that detail in their presentation.
All right, I'm good.
Okay, so you're good with page one?
Yep.
Okay. You guys, anything else besides what you looked at?
Just changed people's names spelling.
Okay. Okay, let's go to page two then. Starts right there.
I think there's still that unresolved thing about clear report, what we're trying to say there.
Can you, can you highlight the section you're at?
Very bottom, page two.
Oh, right there?
The landscaping plan?
It's the easement, it was had to do with the title search.
If you, if you can highlight one word in that sentence, I can find you.
It's the end of three.
Okay.
There it is.
There it is, clear.
Yeah, it seems like some words are missing.
Did we run a full title search and have the...
Yeah, it's the full title search, have a clear title report, I guess.
Right, you just have the clear report, it just...
So you want to reword that?
No.
I'm channeling my Tom on that.
Have the clear, a clear title report, a clear?
We can say a, a clear title report.
Okay, John?
Yeah.
Would that change? All right, next page. You done with that page? What's that?
There's a sentence trying to say something there that I...
Yeah, what's that highlighted thing there, that text wrapping, text wrapping break?
I think this is some formatting thing, so I wouldn't worry about that.
Okay, okay. Well, why is the other sentence after that highlighted?
Because I said, what is this trying to say?
Landscaping plan proposed the facility in the site, location, structure, trees.
I don't even see verb in there.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Hold on one second, I think, don't pay attention to what I'm doing right now. I'm going to the other draft. This is the old one. Okay, yeah. I pulled that section, that was, this is in the Land Use Ordinance, this is first section. But the board discussed the landscaping plan is sufficient, and I propose to remove this sentence.
Right.
That made no sense to you all. So does that work?
Yes. Okay, so you're just deleting that, all right? Why the funny lines underneath, in close proximity?
That's...
Doesn't like the grammar?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And it, yeah, it thinks it has a better suggestion.
That's okay.
Where are you, Joe, what page are you on?
We're on page six.
Okay.
I'll let you catch up here. Let us know when you get up.
I'm up.
You're up, okay. Can't stop there, Ryan, six, until we get John clear.
I'm up to eight.
You're up to where? Up to six?
Yeah, I'm good.
You guys okay? Any, please jump in, say something if there's concern. Okay, we're on page seven then, starts with location, period, Chair Straskey responded.
Page five.
That's not what I have. Mine starts with municipal services.
We're on, we're on page six.
Okay, that's the page right, right there, isn't it? I see, location, this is the top of the page.
Page six.
Page six.
You're on a different...
Mine's five.
And actually, it's not even right, this is page five.
Because of the dynamics of him adding creativity and push like that, the change ensued.
Okay. Are you, you all right now? Are you with us?
No, I don't know where we are. What page are we on?
We're at top of page five on that municipal document.
Top of page five, okay.
Why does it say page six on the bottom of this screen?
I don't, I don't know.
If you're, where you are is on page six.
Yeah, I'm looking at the bottom there, it says page six.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's because your cursor, your cursor is on page six.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't know why it is, but...
It's a little odd.
So what we're looking at now, I believe, is page six. Is that correct on the screen? It says page six.
Section 809.4.
Yes.
I have as page five.
Five.
All right. Okay, so I'll subtract the number from what the screen says here, so everybody's in the right reference.
I love technology sometimes, and not very often at the same time. All right. Where are you, you're on section 809.4, Joe?
809, 809.4 standards, we're looking at.
Yeah, number five, the board discussed the 105% setback requirement of the height of the tower.
What's 105 highlighted?
Well, it was just, it, see where it is, it's a, it's 105% of the height of the tower is the setback requirement, so it's just the...
The wording.
Wording's in, you know, there's, you got to move some...
Okay, John, you want to suggest the correct wording?
Board discussed 105% of the height, the setback requirement of 105% of the height of the tower.
Sounds good.
So just move 105% after the word of. 105% and then put of after 105%.
And that's because if it were to fall down, it would be within the property.
Yeah.
So that, that works for you?
Yes.
On four, where my cursor is, little lollipop, can you change required to maximum? Because it's not, it's not a requirement that it's 195 feet.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, and some of this, I mean, grammatically, we could have made more, I could have made more changes here, but I didn't.
We could be here for a couple more days.
Yeah, yeah. Some of these are a little hard to read, but it doesn't change the substance of it. You can still get the substance out of the words, even though they may be a little bit awkward for the tower is not tall enough to warrant a light, and it could have been worded a little bit differently.
Sounds poetic, though.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, so that's page five, we're on page six now?
I believe so, yes.
Starts at top with detailing this and stamped by the applicant's engineer. Okay, 809.5 we're looking at. There are no changes proposed in what was written. Move on to section 1305, performance standards.
At first, at first, 1305 Performance Standards, standard's four, just kind of hangs out there.
What, is there something on the next page? Is there a next page?
It's the last line of what we're looking at.
I see it, what comes after that, it's off the bottom of the screen. There we go. Oh, yeah. Okay, so it is hanging. Standards four.
So what are you talking about, Joe? I was looking at 809.6.
The title, right on top, Jeff.
It's not even a title, because the title's above it, but...
Oh, that can be deleted, 1305 Performance Standards. And then there was a four, something else, and then it made no sense. I guess the four just didn't get deleted.
Looks like it's hanging, yeah.
Yep. I'll delete it.
Is there a reason it's there twice?
I think you just delete the whole line.
Delete one line.
Because it's right above it.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. 1305 Performance Standards.
Looks good.
All right?
Yeah.
All right, on page seven. John, you're with us?
Yeah.
Okay, move on to page eight.
So, okay, the straw vote thing, I don't recommend that in there because it's a straw vote, it's not a, it's not a vote. For findings of facts.
Okay, I added that, that's what was done. You're saying it's just not appropriate to document that particular fact.
I don't think so, because...
It's not necessary.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We're on conclusion on that page now?
Mm-hmm.
Conclusion section. Okay, down through the bottom of that page, through the vote. All right, next page, page eight, starts with the 22 September meeting. The second paragraph, you might just make that Vinyl Street S, a capital S, just so it's more clear. The ST. Right there, yes. I don't know, so, but yeah, that's clear. There we go. I, this is a nip, but we say Kenneth there, do we want to say mister? That's the radio frequency report prepared by C squared. Chair Straskey asked, mister, is it Kaz, Kazera? I assume that's Kenneth. Just defining what MP is, and then one of the other significant facts that he mentioned during his presentation. That even with all the towers, he did say it would be below the FCC limit, significantly below. Okay, through page eight.
Okay, under public comment.
Page nine?
Page nine, yeah.
John, you're through as page eight?
Yep.
Okay, page nine, go ahead, Tom.
The second sentence under public comment. Is this supposed to be Ms. Kiermaier and Ms. Bauer? Or why have we got two Kiermiers there? Right here?
I don't know, I'm having a hard time reading it with all the markups.
I think, I think it's just Ms. Kiermaier is...
It's both of them.
Yeah, it was both of them.
She's scared about the tower.
Oh, well, I, I think when I, in the original, Ms. Kiermaier and Ms. Bauer was there with a period. And so maybe that whole thing should have just been, oh, it was deleted, maybe it should...
I think, Joe, you deleted the redundancy there. I did a find and replace for the Kiermiers, and then it reinserted it.
Okay, yes.
Did one of them, it had been eliminated.
I see.
Oh, that's what, okay, okay.
There's a Kiermier right below it that's misspelled.
That's true, too.
Probably did a search from a place on a specific spelling.
Yeah.
And it was misspelled a different way. All right. Is that the, how much more is there on page eight?
Oh, we got it concerned.
No, because she said scared.
Yeah.
Sounds editorial.
I'm not sure what that means, though, if you're scared about the tower.
The effects of that.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Bauer, please. Is there a, maybe there's just an extra return in there, carriage return before telecommunications act on the bottom?
It just doesn't fit.
Telecommunications act on the bottom, before the T, is there a carriage return?
I think it just doesn't fit.
Oh, it doesn't?
It's a big word.
Okay. And then act should be a capital A. Public comment section closes, 606, okay.
Where did we decide that text wrapping break was?
Where's that?
It's in front of the board entered into deliberation.
Yeah, I, I think just when things get changed, the computer system registered a text wrapping break. I don't think anybody typed it in.
Yeah, I would say that maybe what happened was I downloaded this, I did it in Pages on my MacBook, and then I converted it back to Word, and then I uploaded it. So that might be why.
Yeah.
Just in that double conversion.
Couldn't follow you.
That double conversion, something wasn't translated properly. Is, is that red really bold, or is that just the way that that? It shouldn't be bold.
Yeah, it's bold right now, but I'll, I'll take care of it.
All right. Um, that, okay, on the screen that I'm looking at here, the paragraph that begins with the board determined that it would be outside their authority or outside their ability? Outside their authority, should that be?
Where is, where is this? This is on, on page ten.
Eight.
Uh, this is page, put your, do your cursor on this page and it'll update the page.
I'm, I'm just working off the screen now, I had to.
This is, this is, this is my.
It says page nine.
I know it does, I don't know why it's doing that, but.
Oh, it's ten, it was a number less before.
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
This is, this is.
What, can we reference people to that section? Um, what is that, what section is that?
It's page ten.
It is page ten.
All right, so you're on, you're on it, page ten?
This is where I'm at.
So my question is, should that be ability or authority? I think it's authority.
It should have been, if it wasn't.
Well, grammatically, it should be.
You have the ability to change that.
Yes, by the way.
Well, I, I want to document it properly. Did, did, I, I can't believe that we said it was outside of our ability, maybe we did.
I, I think it's, you're right, it's authority. Or purview, maybe is a better way.
That's fine, too. Well, again, we should, we should document what was stated.
Since we're doing that, then change there to its, please.
You can use there with a, a plural noun.
Yeah, but a board is not a there, a board is an it.
That's, a board is a plural noun.
Really?
Yes, you can use a, you can use a plural verb with a plural noun.
I don't think so, but I'll go with it.
You could say the public.
The public believes that their opinion.
That's incorrect, that's grammatically incorrect.
I don't, I don't think so.
Could we get back on track a little bit?
All right. We'll reconvene on that.
You can reconvene out, outside the meeting.
I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna do my homework, you do your homework.
Okay, so we're gonna leave ability there? I, I didn't modify that, that's what was captured initially.
I think ability is not the correct word.
Okay.
What is? I think authority or purview is better.
Okay, purview.
Purview. Is that right? Nope.
P U R.
P U R.
P R B U E, isn't it? Is it view?
V I E W.
V I E W, okay, I was half right.
Means a scope of influence or concern. That could be scope, responsibility, compass, extent.
Okay, so which, this says page nine on the screen, you said it says page ten on your screen? The page that we're on right now?
This is page ten, yes.
All right, page ten. Any other concerns on page ten? All right, let's move on to page eleven, starts with FCC requirements with regards to health and safety. That's interesting, is that, what is that supposed to be, is that a title? Why FCC requirements with regard to health and safety?
Yeah, it's a title.
It's a title?
Yeah, this is one of the.
Okay.
One of these sections, um, yeah, break down a surety bond.
Okay, okay.
Should it be all, should it be in title caps, then?
Well, we ought to be consistent all the way through then, on all the sections. Did we do that above for titles?
Let me see.
If we do this enough, we'll have a style sheet, right?
Yeah, right, there you go.
Lean on.
Yeah, none of them are underlined or bolded. Way to bold them all?
I can.
That probably makes it clear, document.
I can do that a little later, too.
Okay.
But with the cleanup of it.
Just makes it more readable.
And I would replace ability there with authority.
Where are you, which line?
That, that first thing.
Okay.
You're right, Tom.
Well, and the, the ordinance doesn't technically enforce anything.
You're right. Does not give the board authority.
Yeah, right, we're overruled or the court enforcement officer.
But you don't even need the ordinance, you just say the board determined, or determined that they, they do not.
You're correct, I looked it up, you, you're right, it's a, but it's a plural pronoun.
Board determined that the ordinance does not have the authority to enforce.
A plural noun is the. But, yes, there is a plural.
Does not provide the authority?
Yeah, and it should be telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six. Maybe, maybe it was just misstated when it was said in the video or at the meeting. I would, I would leave it like that, maybe that's what it was stated.
Should it be the board determined that the ordinance does not provide?
It's not the ordinance, though, you're saying it's the telecommunications act does not give the board authority.
Right. Yeah, and, and we need to address this further on and not as a part of this review, but we need to resolve that conflict between the telecommunications act and our land use ordinance. They're, they're in conflict, and of course, the telecommunications act overrules.
Prevails, yes.
We ought to resolve that conflict sometime.
This is correct, though, as stated, right now.
Yes, it is.
There's nothing in the ordinance that lets us overrule the act.
No, you can't, yeah. Yeah, precedence, you cannot. Okay, um, section nine hundred.
And radio frequency should not be capitalized.
Yeah.
In German, it would be, but not in English.
Would it be in German?
Yeah, German nouns are capital, nouns are capitalized in German.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be, they wouldn't say it as radio frequency in German.
Radio.
Radio?
Radio.
There you go. Now I learned two things tonight.
I can't remember what frequency is in German.
Okay.
Okay, section nine hundred. Okay, so there's the, one of the inconsistencies that Jeff had flagged in that on this vote, this is the first one I've seen, maybe I missed the others.
No, you were right.
But it says who moved and seconded.
Yep. So.
Did they all say that?
No, uh, just, just, um, some of them in, in the wireless tele, in, in this findings of facts, because I wasn't sure what we should do, so I really wanted to have a discussion with you about it, but with the other one, if we want to keep with that, same thing, we can remove that and just say the board moved.
Okay, but this is the first time I've seen it in this document.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think we ought to at least be consistent within the document. And we got to decide on standards, but I would take it out. Because we didn't put who made the motion and who seconded it anywhere else in the document. And again, separately, we need to decide on the format.
So really, you just restate the contents of the motion without saying it's a motion and who made it and seconded it.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And you, just as a, as a primer for me, but what do the recordings of motion authors and seconded mean?
It's just, I, I guess if it really gets to the nuts and bolts of, did you really say this? Then they could be brought into court, but that would never happen, and did you in fact say this? But outside of that, I can't, I can't find a reason. Because this is the board, the board, it's not made up of individuals, you all have equal, so it's the board makes a decision. So for that standing, the board determined.
I know that it always appears in the minutes of all town meetings.
Yep, and I think if you look from town to town, every town.
It's because it's Robert's Rules of Order.
Yep.
A, a motion has to be made and seconded, and it can't be made and seconded in a vacuum. A person has to make it, so that's why it's just done, I'm not sure what significance it has.
Okay.
So.
Section thirteen oh five? That's fine.
And so same thing here.
Yes, you must now section, there you go.
No.
Thanks. Section eight hundred. Section one thousand.
So, let's see, uh, before, let me just look for something, okay. Wanted to put final.
So going forward, we are not going to do motions?
No, no, we, we still do motions, it's just in the findings of facts and conclusions.
In fact, we don't need to do that, okay.
We don't need to document it, yeah.
Okay. So the minutes will have motions?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Will the minutes have anything that isn't in the finding of facts?
We only have two more pages, can we hold it?
We're gonna get into, we're almost there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll hold it.
You want to get there?
He's going out of his seat.
I understand. Okay.
I'll hold you down, I'll hold you down.
Okay, um, so this is the final decision we're looking at now. There are no changes to the original document in this section, no comments from the board. Okay, conditions of approval that were there.
To remove the date, right?
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, that dated again, yeah.
Oh dang it.
All right, and the same sign-off block.
And you add the same content respective to this application that you did.
Yeah, I thought it was on there.
So, uh, in here, is this, with each finding of facts, we have to authorize Joe to sign?
Yeah, but that'll be after, so you all will approve, and then you'll make a motion to approve Joe to sign.
Okay, so after this, we'd have that.
Yep.
On the findings of fact.
Yep.
Joe has been, okay.
Could you just go back to the sign-off block, there we go. Okay, that looks good. All right, um, so last chance on this K J K wireless finding of facts. We've gone through page by page, does anyone have any other comments or concerns about this clearly documenting? Stated?
Nope.
None. Okay, um, so would anyone care to put forward a motion to accept the finding of facts as amended and reviewed tonight?
So moved.
Moved by John, is there a second?
Talking about the cell one?
The K, the K J K wireless finding of facts document.
Yes, second.
Seconded by Tom. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Four zero zero, okay, this is approved. Now, as I understand it, you need to, um, put forward a motion to allow me to sign this on behalf of the board.
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor? I guess I get a vote on it, yeah. Four zero zero, okay, thank you. So that completes the two finding of facts that we had to review for this evening. And now we have minutes to review. And before we get started with that, um, let me just say that we only have three individuals here this evening that were at the August meeting. And so reviewing the planning board charter and consulting with the attorney, a majority of those individuals present must vote to approve a document. So what I'm trying to say is, at least a majority out of us four can approve the minutes from August fourth, even though there are only three people that were there. Okay?
Has nothing to do with how many board members there are total.
Correct, correct. So let's review those first, you've got those up there, the August fourth one. I will administer this process, but since I was not there, I will not be voting on this. So, um, are there any other comments? Let's go through, what do we have, two pages, five pages? Okay, let's go page by page, page one.
Was it really streamed on ViCom dot com? Is that a thing?
Okay. Okay, on page one, let's go to page two. What do the blue dots represent, are those?
Just noting that there is an edit.
Oh, okay. Interesting, never saw that format before. All right, uh, it just looks like spelling corrections there. Page two.
Just, Ryan, you're right there, just estimate, should be estimated.
Why am I not seeing, uh, page, page numbers on this? Oh, there it is, there it is. Yeah, got it now.
Page two. Couple more misspellings. Page three.
Yeah, where are we on that? Um, bottom of page three, there's ensue, ensure, should be insure. I'll just change it.
There you go.
You got it. I'm gonna skip grammatical things, just to get this done. We're on page?
Three.
Three? Three's good for me.
Yep.
Going for.
Okay. Yep.
So, again, I missed a little bit of what you were saying about talking to the attorney, Joe, but.
All, all I was trying to say was that there are only three members present this evening to vote on this. Um, but that is a majority of the total members present, and therefore, that majority will carry the approval of these minutes. I can't vote because I wasn't there.
That was a, all right, so if there's a majority of the members.
Present at a meeting.
From that meeting that are in this meeting.
No, from this meeting.
No, what he said is right.
From that meeting?
From that meeting, if there's a majority of those members at this meeting, which is what you're saying, too.
Right.
Yeah.
But you can't vote on the minutes, then?
I'm not, I wasn't there.
So only three of us can vote?
That's correct.
But as long as there's a majority of the three approving the minutes, they're.
Three out of the four, it'll carry it. Three out of the four that were at the meeting.
Okay, so if only two of us voted for it, then it wouldn't carry?
That wouldn't be a majority.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it, just, sorry.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of approving the August, what was it, fourth? Minutes? One, one, two, three.
Oh, sorry, three, yes.
Three, zero, one. I abstained since I wasn't at the meeting.
Who, who motioned to approve?
Uh, Tom did, didn't he?
Tom?
I guess I did.
I seconded.
Okay, that's what I heard.
Okay, let's move on to the next set of minutes. Uh, what's this, September, yeah, September twenty second minutes.
Okay.
Here's where my concern comes in.
Go ahead.
That we're redoing the same review of information from a meeting.
Yeah, and so, we need to talk about the redundancy between the documents, because they shouldn't be redundant.
So...
I agree with that, and I was concerned about that reviewing this also.
Yeah, so when I first came in, I, I had concern about it, because they're minutes, and it's supposed to be what's the written documentation based on somebody that's present, which would be the recording secretary, and they presented, and then if there's major issues, then you'd say there's major issues, but for the most part, doesn't get the point across. Minutes have, as, as we have experienced with the hotel debacle, no standing in court whatsoever, like at all. If they are presented with minutes, the minutes get remanded back, and then the findings of facts, that's where those come into play. Finding of facts have the only legal standing in a courtroom. So, the minutes, we have a recording, which also count legally per minutes, and we have a written document in the event something happens to our recordings, which I recommend to keep. But as long as the, the written minutes don't contradict anything that's being stated, in terms of motions being made and the vote, which are the main aspect of it, then we should just approve and keep going with it. Now, if there's substance in it, then, then, that conflicts with what actually had, we need to have a serious conversation about, is the recording secretary doing their job?
And so, my only concern is, I don't think you want to purposefully make them redundant, because that would be more chances for them being in conflict.
Yes.
So I don't, I think we need to decide when we get to the other business section tonight, next, how we're gonna structure this. And so, I think from my perspective, the way that I was, I'll say, brought up in this environment of the planning board is that we used minutes really as the only document, other than the hotel application that we looked at. The minutes were the only thing we had. And it was a little bit of a surprise to me to hear that on every project, we had to do a finding of facts. And so, we need to just talk about that and, and so, so let's get through these minutes, and then we'll get to that. So, again, this first time here, these are probably gonna be a little redundant, because we're just the first time through this process with the finding of facts. So let's try to get past that, as long as we don't see anything that's terribly in conflict, which there shouldn't be. Let's just leave them the way they are, the way they're written today, but going forward, we need to decide what's appropriate for each of them.
May I just make a comment on the August fourth? When I look at the foot, the footer, the date is incorrect. The date says September twenty second. It should be, since it's August fourth minutes, it should be August fourth.
And it says twenty twenty one.
That's a minor problem.
Sorry.
That's a year off. Peace out.
Never mind.
Okay, where are we at now? Is this really the September twenty second ones?
This is the September twenty second.
Okay, and you just looked at the footer, and the footer was, has the right year?
Footers, the correct, September twenty second, twenty twenty two.
Okay, great. Probably be a space between September and minutes.
Well, the, it's, when, when it gets printed, it actually works.
Um, alright. So, I think everyone's had a chance to look through these, there's a few comments on here. Page one, anything else?
Uh, hang on, let's see, let me figure out what page this is here, I'm on page two, okay.
Page two, okay, let's go to page two.
So, in this motion, eight oh nine, board reviewed section eight oh nine. We move that the application satisfies those general standards of performance with the following conditions of approval. Okay, that should be a col, a colon there, uh, Ryan? That, now it's stating the condition of approval, and that would mean that the condition of approval is that the applicant creates and maintains screening within the parcel, and that other conditions of approval in eight oh nine, yeah, okay. Now it's right. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that page, page two?
Yeah, again, the motion, there's some punctuation issues. Let me see if I can get this straight. The motion was that the board has found that wireless meets the requirements of the land use ordinance. You don't need a semicolon there, get rid of that, and is approved with the following conditions. Creation and maintenance of screening within the parcel, then a semicolon. The standard considerations of eight oh nine point five are met. And, do we want to make that last sentence a condition of approval? Did we?
You did.
Negotiate the ser, okay, so then there's three conditions of approval is basically the one, the way it's structured now, and you don't need a capital C on creation, on Orion. Or on the, on the, any of the, the, sorry, they can be lowercase. The other one there, there you go, thanks. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Moving on.
Okay. That's it.
So we did, we did approve the July twenty eighth minutes, okay.
At that meeting.
At that meeting, yeah.
Okay, anything else on the twenty two September minutes that we just reviewed? Everybody good with that?
No. I moved to approve the minutes from the, what was the date again?
September twenty two.
September twenty two.
Twenty second of September meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Seconded by Tom. All in favor? Okay, four zero zero, and that's at the, yes, I get a vote, okay. So the twenty two September minutes are approved. Okay, Jeff, now we get to the section that you wanted, well, let's, let's do the, let's do the first part of vice chair election. We have received a resignation letter from the vice chair of the planning board committee, and so, having that, we need to elect a new vice chair. And so, at this point, if anyone would care to either put their own name in nomination, anyone would care to nominate anyone on the board, we need to replace the vice chair. Or if individuals feel like they need another month to think about this, we could defer this item until next month if...
I'd like to nominate Jeff.
Okay.
I wanted to nominate Jeff.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'll second.
You don't have to second, a nomination.
Alright, any other, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, Jeff, are you willing to accept?
Can we nominate somebody who isn't here?
One of the individuals that's here, not here, is an alternate, that's Victoria.
I'm an alternate, you can't do me.
You're, you're an alternate, so that would eliminate them, and David is not here either. So if, I mean, in absentia, I'd need to talk with David then, if we did that, we wouldn't complete that tonight.
So there's three eligible vice chairs currently serving?
There are three individuals on board that would be eligible, that would be Tom, you, and David. And so, if it were David, I need to just confirm that he was willing to serve in that position.
We can wait, if you, you know, if you want to wait until he attends a meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, this is my fourth meeting, like, fourth, not even, including continuances, so I'm not...
So you're, you don't feel comfortable, are you willing to accept the nomination?
I'm not saying I'm gonna do it eventually, but just at this moment, I feel...
You don't feel comfortable yet?
I'm still novice.
The reason I nominated Jeff is because in those four meetings, he's shown himself to be assiduous in his responsibilities.
With you, I appreciate that.
I, I don't think I've ever seen a new member coming in and getting it faster than you have.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And just, I mean, even levitating off his seat during the meetings.
After all those...
So there are, you know, there's...
All those remarks, you still want to wait?
Can I consider it?
Sure, okay, so let's defer until next month then. And I'll, I'll speak with David also, and, is anyone nominating David?
Yeah, Tom did, and then, oh, no, no, not David, no, 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 Jeff, I thought we were talking about Jeff. Uh, no, nobody's nominating David, but I, I just, if it puts you at ease at all, Jeff, I mean, I'm happy to grab a coffee with you, I was vice chair for many years, and you know, under a number of chairs. I can kind of help you at least understand what I went through.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And put you at ease about it, I mean, heck, if I can do it, come on, Joe, just kidding.
Okay, so let's defer that item A, vice chair election, until next month.
Okay.
Talk a little bit about parking ordinance. And so, if I can, let me just throw up two documents that I put together, that Orion's gonna pull out of the parking folder.
Well, before we go off the minutes, if I, can we just make sure everybody's, I, I'm still a little fuzzy on findings of fact and minutes, and so, did we decide?
Want to talk about that before the parking ordinance?
Yeah, because we're sort of fresh on everybody's mind, and I don't...
Alright, let's go, let's go that, that first.
So, if I can understand it, the minutes are going to be sort of not drill down too deeply going forward?
More administrative?
More administrative, and, and it's really just to capture the meeting as it took place. Findings of facts really gets into the meat of what you found as a board, and the conclusions that you made. Now, like I said, which one supersedes the other, the findings of facts supersede. So are they redundant? A little bit, and that's why I kind of question it, and, and why we have to do it, and the reason we have to do it is because the law says so. That's the reason we have to do it.
You have to do the finding of facts.
Is this a new law?
Findings of facts and minutes.
And the minute.
Now, the minutes...
Is this a new law, or a law that's been in effect?
No, it's, it's, it's a law that's been in effect for a while.
Okay.
The minutes, there's, it's a little, it's, it's not hazy, it's just not worded correctly. The recording suffices as minutes, but also, we have to have written findings. But depending on what you are, like if you're a committee, you can have a recording that suffices for minutes. Which is interesting to me, why the board cannot use the recording with this fancy equipment we have, that does a very good job of recording our, our meetings.
Usually.
Usually.
Sometimes.
But as long as we have that, which in my opinion is, is more substantive, because you can actually watch the whole meeting than the minutes. And how many people actually go back and look at the minutes? Not that many people, unless you really want to know who made the motion and who seconded.
Well, let me just say, with respect to that, on some of the applications that we've looked at in the recent past years, I have gone back into the file and looked at some of the minutes for reference.
Right.
Related to some of the applications we looked at. So they did serve a purpose, and I think they summarize, before you go deep, down deep and look at a video, it does summarize what went on in the meeting.
No, it definitely does.
So I think that's a good purpose it serves.
I guess it can serve as a summary for, for, if, if that's really what you want to look into to dive down to.
But what I'm trying to get clear on is something you said earlier about the only thing that has legal standing are the findings of fact, so what, what is actual, what is the actual function of the minutes then, if it has no legal basis?
In terms of, like, what we have right now, we have an appeal.
Index the meeting.
If, if nobody appeals anything, like, we don't have a strong record of a lot of appeals here, other than the hotel, and now the Hope for the Future site. If we don't have any appeals, there's really no need to do findings of facts, but given that we had the appeal of the hotel, we had this appeal of Hope for the Future, and future development that's coming, it's probably a good idea to start now, to really start combing through, getting a strong findings of facts down. So then, in the event of future appeals, we don't have this redundancy with attorney fees and lawyer fees, spent a lot of money defending the planning board's decision. And all that was remanded back was for us to add more detail into what the decision was. So it wasn't like you had to go back and re-review anything, you just restated the facts. So, adding this...
Alright, so let me go back to my question again. So, if something is, is appealed, going forward, the minutes themselves have no legal standing?
No, and like...
They won't even be referred to by an opposing, you know, an attorney representing the appellant's?
I mean, they, they might refer to it, but it would, it's not, it wouldn't be in the findings of facts, it might be something in it, but in terms of it, the findings of facts and conclusions of law is your decision on that application, and so that is what would be appealed.
Okay. So the findings of fact would be, but when, would they go into the mo, the mode of being in front of a, another board or a court, can they use the minutes as any, to have any bearing, any way of making a statement about, well, what they meant is here in these minutes, that's what the court should pay attention to?
Can they try, sure, they could try, but that's not the findings of facts and conclusions of law, which in, in, in the legality standpoint, the findings of facts, the FOF, that has precedence over minutes.
So if there's a conflict, they ignore the minutes and go to the findings of fact?
And as a record of how the courts have handled it, they've ignored the minutes.
Okay, no, you just said they've been going to the minutes.
No, I said they've, they, they're not.
They're not going to the minutes?
They don't go to the minutes.
Okay, so now, my next question is, the video you're saying, you said, could serve legally as minutes? So we didn't even need to have minutes?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to vet further with our attorneys, and if we even need written minutes, because right now with the SLIG board, they just have their recording, they don't have typed up minutes. And they've got some little checks and stuff on a box, you can look at it, those are their minutes and whatnot, but they don't have typed up formal minutes, so...
Okay, so...
Yeah, can I, may I interject something here? I, I think it's crazy for us to have the level of detail that we have in the minutes, and then have to do findings of fact in addition. And part of what I've noted is that the minutes attempt to summarize already a capsule of, of what went on, and that, that is very difficult for a person outside the board witnesseth, you know, you read these things, you say, what does that, what does that even mean? Okay, is, are these the important points that occurred during the review of the project?
Unless you're part of that discussion, it is difficult.
And half the time it's not, you say, why, why did they, you know, they said this, it doesn't make any sense. So, I know David many times has said, oh, the only thing that should be in the minutes is the, the, basically, the motion.
Yeah.
And if, if we, if we just have a copy of the agenda, and then we say, okay, so and so moved that section nine hun, the, the application as presented is compliant with section nine hundred, and then the vote. That would be enough.
Yes.
That would be enough, and it would make the minutes a lot easier to review, because we don't want to have to go and review and start dotting i's and crossing t's in minutes and in completely...
And again, my, I'm always fanatical about this, I'm always concerned that if you have redundant documents, they're not gonna match.
That's true.
Not intentionally, but it just happens, and so, you're right, they definitely should not be redundant.
So, and not only that, that's more for us to review, so, and all that detail is just like, oh...
But, but again, there was, there was pre-finding of facts, where we had all that detail in the minutes. Whether that was the right way or the wrong way to do it, that's the way we did it. So that certainly should change now, and I'm agreeing with what you've said, Tom, with this finding of facts, so...
But who does the findings of facts then?
We gotta talk about that next, and about a process for that, because I really struggled this past month with the finding of facts. Because we were reviewing finding of facts from July twenty eighth, do you remember what you had for lunch on July twenty eighth? I mean, I can't recall everything, and that's why I had to go back and review the video, it was very cumbersome for me, to make sure I got it right. So we need a good process of capturing the finding of facts too, which I think is gonna save us time. They have to be done in an expedient manner, so it's more fresh in our mind.
Well, part of, and part of it is making sure that we address some of the... Well, part of, and part of it is making sure that we address some of the salient points so that we know what constitutes a finding of fact that's going to be important on appeal.
Absolutely agree. So to that point.
Yeah, so.
Orion and I have talked about having Phil do a little seminar on finding of facts, what's appropriate.
And that, that'll be, that'll be, that'll be in January, but what, what you're gonna receive in these applications going forward, and if this passes in November for me to make those determinations on if the applications are complete, like what we've proposed. As long as that passes, then I'll have no problem putting this together, in that you have a complete application, and then that application will be parsed out. Very similar to how Gartley and Dorsky does their applications, but there'll be every, every section that we absolutely have to talk about. And so there'll be some discussion whether or not the board finds that this is relevant, it pertains to it, so we make sure we're actually covering all this. So we'll just go through it, and, and, and we won't have to think too hard about it.
And we can even have a template, really, right, to just do that.
Well, that sort of reminds me of what we used to have with, um, Bill when he was, uh, he gave us kind of a crib sheet that way.
A crib sheet, actually, yeah.
Yeah, he'd gone through it ahead of time and kinda said.
That checkbox thing?
Check this off, this off, you can, you know, and it sped up things a lot, but.
Yep.
And that's why the Gartley-Dorsky presentations are nice, because they've got that all, they've got it all down.
Well, and so, I would just caution, the thing you need to be careful with there is that that's a good baseline. But certainly, if there's something that you think is relevant beyond that, you ought to consider that also.
Yeah.
It's, it makes it a lot easier though, because they are very good about including most everything that's.
So I, I have one more, kinda go down a little bit more into this little rabbit hole here. So the minutes have no bearing, but we could also not do minutes because the video now, recording is now, can be used as minutes?
I'm vetting that one with our attorney right now.
Okay. Does the video have any legal standing at any?
They're not gonna review it, we've sent the entirety of the planning board review of the hotel, and I, I'm sure the court did not click on it once.
Okay, if not the court, does any of the, like, say, the zoning board of appeals look at?
Well, I mean, would they? They probably would, but they shouldn't, they should stick to what the appeal, like, the applicant doing the appeal, they're appealing on a particular standing, and they have their outline, like, two, three items that they don't agree with. So they should stick to those items, and then they would review that in the findings of facts.
Okay.
As I said before though, as a user of old sets of meeting minutes, I find value in them, at least to provide a summary, that if I wanted to go down and dig deep in a video, I would know where to go and where to look. If, if the only thing you had was a video, and you had to go through a two or three hour video every time to look at a documentation of a meeting, it just would be very cumbersome.
And, well, let me jump in, because I know where Jeff, why Jeff just came out here. I think I know. The technology these days can transcribe the audio in a video, and.
Well, it, you know.
I, as a matter of fact, I was just playing with that before the meeting with mine, yeah, it can just transcribe it. The only thing it misses is the character who's talking, the person who's talking. It's just a stream of, just a stream.
You know, I, I, to me, what I'm hearing is the minutes, basically, now if we have a video recording, the minutes are really just, like a table of contents for the video that helps us figure out, oh, just go to that part of the meeting.
They're, they're not legally binding, they're not documenting the details, the finding of fact really does that.
And it does like a crib sheet.
You could have a summary, a little short description of what the project consisted of, and then the votes as you went through.
Are there any matters that come before this board that would be recorded in the minutes, but would not be sufficiently important that we do finding of facts for?
Okay, we need to get Orion back on board to ask that que- I was gonna ask that question next to, that's a good question.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I address the board?
Do you have an active microphone there, so everyone can hear?
It's, it's right here.
Introduce yourself, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Jeff Parker of the, the chair of the zoning board.
Yes, sir.
You were, you were discussing the different roles of these three different documents, so it's called the video document as well.
Video document, minutes, and finding of facts. Yes, sir.
We have, and, and I'm looking forward to, to learning more in, in January with Phil. But, um, just to be real clear, the, the zoning board does go back and look at, you know, some members of the zoning board do go back and look at the, uh, the video contents of your meeting, but my understanding is, is that by law, the only thing we can hang our hat on is the, um, are the findings of facts. Um, so that that document, because it illustrates, we heard this, we considered this, we came to this conclusion. Conclusion, and the, the only thing we get to say as ZBA before it goes further to the court is that, do we find that, um, you discussed the matter enough to come to the logical conclusion? We may not even agree with your conclusion, all we're looking at is process. So, to throw into your conversation, you know, yes, we would, we'd love to watch these meetings.
So from your perspective, are the minutes of any value?
We've lived with, Rockport has lived with minutes that are six lines long for an entire meeting. So-and-so made a, a thing and bam, and then, you know, detailed meetings. I like the searchability of it, and I like the fact that I can go through a three-hour meeting, fourteen pages in whatever time to look in for something. Uh, but I have no, I don't even play a lawyer on TV, so I have no, uh, nothing to say about how they should be in one form or another.
Okay. So you, it sounds like you see a little bit of value there in providing a summary of the meeting.
I do. The question I have in my mind is, if you created findings of facts that sort of go beyond the scope of just plain minutes, um, is that sufficient along with a, a one liner? Because then it's written as well, and you can, you can scan through that. Um, so, you know, we're, both boards, all the boards are trying to, um, maximize their efficiency and spend, you know, the least amount of taxpayer money.
So, but I, if I can, Jeff, just jump to a specific example, the last ZBA meeting, there was a, quite a bit of discussion over, you know.
I, excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we should talk about that as an example, because that's still open.
Alright, well, let me rephrase, let me rephrase, so.
Just, just make an abstract example, ask a question.
So, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Give me a minute. So a ZBA, um, really can only talk about, does the record show that whatever question or whatever point has been raised in appeal, was that deliberated by the planning board? Yes or no? And they just needed something in the record that establishes that that was discussed, not what the decision was after the discussion, not what the definitions of this or that were, were not, that, that's all part of the, what got the planning board to its decision.
Yeah, that was a pretty, lots of things in the middle of that sentence, but, um.
What's that Latin phrase?
What's, what's the Latin phrase?
Yeah.
Of, of, overabundance of.
No, 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 that you use for examining the process the planning board uses. That's it, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what they use, yeah.
Well, de novo versus, what did you offer up? For the Latin phrase? Because it, it, we, we, we don't do a de novo in, in the particular, some of our cases are not de novo, some of them are. But, um.
So if they are not de novo?
When they're not de novo, the only thing that we can base our, our judgment, if you will, um, is the findings of fact.
Yeah, and so if they are de novo, then it's basically like the planning board.
Becomes, the zoning board becomes the planning board once again.
And they look at it all over again. So, yeah, okay, no, that's, that's what I was thinking, okay. Alright, so, yeah.
Okay with yours?
I'm okay.
Okay, let's go back to Jeff's, which was also a concern of mine now, and direct it to Orion.
So, the, the topic I brought was that, um, there, there are purposes, I think, or I'm asking the question, um, to having the minutes, um, where there is not a finding of fact record being made.
Yeah, so the motion, like, capturing the motions, Jeff moved, seconded by Tom, that, so on and so forth. It's sufficient vote, or discussion and then vote, and that really should just be the substance of the minutes. So whatever the law minimum requirement is, is what I recommend the minutes to be. So, time, a place, who's present, who's absent, motions made, discussion, vote, and then the adjournment.
But we have, we have initial reviews, which are not.
But you're talking about pre, pre-application?
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those are not.
Application, and there certainly should be a, a summary of the project that, where that pre-application is made.
And, and that would, that would fall into the findings of facts and conclusions of law. So that would be, like, with the Hope for the Future, there is a pre-application section, and discussions were happened.
Under the findings of fact?
Yeah, so it was just discussion, it was just what, what, what happened. And in terms of the minutes, how that would be is that the board met, who was present, and then the meeting was called a order, and then you can put a line item that, uh, like, whatever, whatever's on the agenda, pre-application for whatever was discussed, and then that's it. Because there's no, there's no motion, there's no, no, no decision made, nothing of that nature.
Okay, so I thought where Jeff was gonna go.
I forgot where my train of thought was, we were having such a silly discussion about.
You wanna get back to it? I'll ask it.
You go ahead.
I thought you were gonna ask, do we have to do a finding of fact for every application that comes before us?
Yes, there you go.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just talk about that for a minute. Um, not to demean some of the smaller projects that come before, but some of the very simple ones, where there is, for example, a home space that's being turned into a daycare center.
And, and also.
It's very simple usually.
And, and, and depending on, and I'm not recommending that we get into, um, um, this level, but if anybody shows up in opposition and they happen to be a butters, like, butters are notified, if they show up and they talk, then we probably should have very sufficient findings of facts. If there's an application before us and it's just the applicants, a butters have been notified, I don't have any written complaints, and there are nobody in the audience to complain about it, then findings of facts can be pretty straightforward. Here's why.
But they still need to be generated?
Well, they, they still need to be generated, yes, but.
As a separate document?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And it, the reason for that is, if, if anybody wants to appeal one of the standings is, were you at the planning board meeting? Or did you submit anything in writing? In addition to, are you an abutting landowner? So without that construct, you won't have standings in the appeal process. So that would determine really how.
Follow three or one or, one or more of the three?
No, just those two. You have to be, uh, an abutting landowner, and you have to have participated in the planning board meeting in some manner. So if those two happen, then we need to have substantial findings of fact. So I recommend as good practice is to have substantial findings of fact, so we can stand behind regardless of the situation, but.
So in the, to that point, in the findings of fact with, say, a pre-application, alls we really have to establish in the findings of fact is not necessarily what was discussed in the pre-application, but that a pre-application.
That's the minutes. The findings of facts will, like what we did with Hope for the Future, that will have what was, what was discussed, uh, at that meeting.
At the pre-application meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't see a whole lot, um.
I don't think we mentioned it, did we?
Mentioned, and that's why I was going to it, because I was trying to see what it would actually look like in real life.
Yeah, so it's got the project overview, which is the applicant, given their description of what it is.
It's not very much.
And then the planning board kinda going.
Well, because it's not really a decisive meeting, I mean, we're not making.
That's what I mean, and yet, in some cases, in, in cases in, back in the history, um, I've found it, I've heard in, in the hearing, in the, uh.
So, so, so with, with the pre-application, especially this one, they really kinda wanted to vet how the planning board was going to decide on this Title thirty eight, section four four zero two, item six exclusion. And that was really ultimately gonna determine how they proceeded with that, so that really needed to be included, that the board did discuss it, and that the board generally felt that that was an acceptable item, but the board didn't have any vote on it.
Right, but, but other parts of the pre-application, which, again, even if the application itself is a written document that may be looked at in the meeting, but it's nowhere mentioned here, but in, in other appeals I've seen historically, uh, there would be a lot of references to, well, somebody said such and such in a pre-application meeting, therefore, that's fact, and in fact, it isn't. So you're saying that has no bearing whatsoever, it's.
I'm saying in the minutes, it, it has no bearing, in the findings of facts, I mean, something was discussed, and the board did generally say, this is what we do agree with, it's not a formal decision, but in the next, next bit, we, we build into that a decision was made on this, it was pretty early on, to, to codify that, so.
And based on that pre-application, they could come back either at the board's suggestion or for other reasons and make changes in the final application too.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be binding.
No, it's not binding, and there's no vote to it, it's just a pre-application, and it's labeled.
That's why I'm saying if it's not binding, if the whole point of the pre-application is to allow that applicant to go back and fix stuff and rearrange things,
Yep.
then in a findings of fact document, all that you really need that is a fact is that you did a review prior to the application. You don't have to say, even say, what was reviewed, do you?
Um, I think it's just gonna depend case by case. Like, um, uh, like with this one, for exam, for, just to use Hope for the Future, just because it's the most recent one, with the pre-application, they really wanted to vet something that's a state law, to make sure that everybody understood it, so there was, there was a lot of discussion around it.
Subdivision or.
Right, so, so you, you take any other application, if they're coming before you, and they're really trying to vet that.
That was a good use of a pre-app meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I believe it needs to be included, and, and the board voted that it should be included as well, but discussion further on, if the board decides, maybe we shouldn't include pre-applications, and we can vet that further with the attorney. But this was sent to the attorney before the draft, the draft version was, and he didn't see any concern with it.
Right now, based on what I know, I propose that we'd include the pre-application meeting, but since there's nothing binding in there, that we not go into detail about, you know, what was discussed or approved, or nothing was approved.
Yeah, because I, I think it's a great misunderstanding of what the pre-application is supposed to do, and.
Yeah, it's just a chance for, informally for both sides, kinda get together.
Well, then, I, I can take it further then, with, I can bring those concerns up with the attorney, and, uh.
Okay, so if we've exhausted the need and kind of an overview of what the documents are, which ones we'll do, I'd like to talk a bit more about process. And so let me just start off by saying that my concern is that, um, when the document, when, when the finding of facts is captured after the meeting, I feel like I need to go through and do a different level of review. As opposed to, if there was a process that I could be assured that we abs- accurately captured the information for the finding of facts during the meeting, and I knew that there was a process that worked for that, I would spend less time than reviewing and verifying the information that was in there. Does that make sense? Is that clear, what I'm trying to say? I, I didn't, I didn't have a level of confidence from a July meeting that was transcribed, I'm not picking on anybody who did it. It was a very tedious process to go through and, and capture those findings. But I felt like I needed to go back and review it in more detail, because of that process that we used.
So, so, um, example, Thursday, we have our meeting of decisions made. Friday, I'm gonna start typing everything up, and then by early next week, I should have those finished.
And then you review it while it's still kinda fresh in your mind, yeah.
Yeah, and then I'll send that out, so everyone can kinda start putting your hands on it to make sure we can capture all of that while it's fresh.
Okay, so if people buy the timing argument on my part, then we talk about the process next. These, this one were like ten, thirteen-page documents, which are big documents. If we do two or three of these in a month, there's multiple finding of fact documents.
Yep.
Is, are you gonna do these, or is there gonna be another person that does these?
So I'm, I'm gonna be typing all of these up, um, initially, and it's gonna build my case for why we probably need to hire another individual in the office, but.
Is there, is there a different process we could use to capture more efficiently, capture the data during the meeting? Anybody have any ideas? I mean, if it's like a form or something.
Checkboxes.
It, well, if it's a form, and then as you go through that section, you just read through the form and make sure that we record like an order, the information.
And that's why I was almost admitting to the, the, this document become something that we base our discussion around, almost like your, your flow chart.
Yeah.
To say, we've gone through all of these sections and we've got a vote on each one, like, we can see it all together.
And then even the way that's organized, even if somebody did it after the fact, it would still make it a lot easier to go through that format, if they knew what it was, and it was consistent.
But there, there needs to be also.
But there, there needs to be also some of the content in those, not just checking off the box.
Yes, it does, yeah.
So when, when you have like something occurring in, in a given district, okay? And you need to. Like I, I'm thinking, oh. When, when we have things like landscaping, okay? What are, what are the important elements that we have to actually consider about those? And.
So here, let me, let me pull up something real quick.
That in the abstract is kind of.
And then at the end, I would envision that Jeff or you would say, okay, I've gone through the landscaping. And in summary, my concerns are this, this, this and this. At the end, just kinda summarize this form of what you've got and then we move on to the next section. And so maybe you just jot the notes down in this preset form while we're going through landscaping, more bushes, setback of bushes and that. And then at the end, before we finish the section, okay, can you please summarize it? And you'd say, okay, we have these concerns about it, we're gonna ask for this and this and we're concerned about the setback or something. Does that make sense?
Rather than spending time on what I'll do. So um, other, other municipalities, what they do is they put a draft findings of facts together. That, that, that um, do kinda what you're talking about. So you've, you've got your document, you know kinda what you're doing. And then there's proposed motions based on another review. However, that, that's getting outside of what my ability is going to be if the November eighth. Passes, cause mine is just the qualitative aspect of it. But most municipalities have got a team of planners. And most of the planners, they review it against the ordinance and they determine whether or not it fits and then they make a recommendation to the board and the board will determine if that also fits. That's not where we're at, that's not the level to sit down yet. Um, but I can put that together and um, have those sections ready. So that you have those sections already going and you can make comments in that or notes and the chair can make notes.
When we get, when we get public comments, do we have to either say that? We, we just record it or do we have to actually deliberate on whether they are germane, relevant? Or not?
No, how, how you're, y'all are currently conducting your, your meetings is fine. There's, there's nothing wrong with how you're handling it. Public comment is made, you've accepted it. If the applicant wants to make a discussion about that and addressing it, then they can.
Can I just add to that? So then I agree with everything you just said and I would add to that, you heard all of the public comments. If you then want to pull back out one of those public comments that you believe is relevant to a section we're reviewing, you should do that.
Yes, yes.
That, that's how, I, I don't wanna say by, by exception, but as a relevant to a section that we're reviewing. I think it's appropriate to pull it out and.
Yeah, and I think what, what I've observed happening with public comments, time and time again is. Uh, kind of a, an unrealistic expectation of what the planning board's role is. You know, thinking that we can somehow, you know, say no to certain things just because. There's some, something that's outside the ordinance that is almost, is sometimes subjective. Sometimes completely unrelated, sometimes related to a larger vision of what the community should or should not be. Um, uh, you know, things that aren't actually in the, the land use ordinance. So to me, you, you end up almost having to filter it all out to just get to what part of this. Relates to an ordinance language in the ordinance.
And some of those comments may be relevant to the land use ordinance.
Yeah, but I, I find that there's, you know, it's a pretty low percentage usually. It's unfortunate. Cause I, I just don't think the planning board, this planning board has.
You talking about public comments and trying to filter out if it has any relevance?
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
I mean, it creates a lot of noise unfortunately.
It does and, and with the notification to the abutting landowners, I think they'll have time to properly review. And make a determination if they do have a concern.
I guess where I would go with that Orion is maybe create a little um, sheet for people to, you know. To guide them on their public comment, you know, what to focus on or something like.
I, I don't, I don't know about that one, that, that could get us into some hairy situations.
Okay.
If people have a question about it, they should talk to me though.
Yeah.
I, I encourage anybody and everybody out there to talk to me if they have a concern about a project.
I, I usually do try to encourage people when they come up with their public comments to please, if they could, identify. Which section of the land use ordinance they're concerned about.
Yep.
That helps.
Yeah.
Focus their attention.
Yeah.
Because we, we only, as you've mentioned, we only have authority to look at the land use ordinance and the requirements in there. So if they could point us to the ones they have concerns about, that could focus our attention. Um, so finish up on the process thing. Is it worth trying to put together some kind of a template? Um, that maybe we could follow?
Um.
Uh, during the meeting to try to capture and maybe summarize those comments, is that a reasonable thing to try? And, and let me just say, we all need to understand here, we're going through a learning process on this, it's probably gonna take us six months to get this down. So what we do the first time may not be the best, we'll get there.
So in, in um, our SharePoint system, I put a findings and conclusions uh, folder in there. And I'm, I'm creating some for minor, major subdivisions, those are not quite done yet. Um, and, but the site plan I think is done in terms of just content and how we generally review. So we can take a look at that, um, or I guess not tonight fully, but this flow. Is how we generally do our meetings. And so I've got all of the sections for like thirteen oh five, all of these items. So there would be a comments after one and format is format, we can change the format all day long. But um, preservation enhancing landscape, is it relevant, is it not relevant, planning board makes a determination X, Y, Z. So each of these would have something of that nature and then um, well, that would be captured in the findings. Uh, and then the conclusion would be based on the above findings, the board determines X, Y, Z and then a vote. And then we'd make a determination here also, motion to by whom if we wanted to, seconded by whom if we wanted to. Or we just have the conclusion and then the vote, so we can mull that over as well. Same thing with chapter one thousand, chapter nine hundred, we wouldn't have to do, like, it's not relevant for each of these. We would just have to pull out the one that it is relevant and the findings would be that, you know, the board has found that the only relevant land, uh, zoning district is. So on and so forth. And then same thing with the conclusions, as mentioned before.
I, I don't see, this isn't really much different from what we already do, is it Joe?
No, it's not, it's not any different, like literally, it's, it's just.
What I'm, what I'm thinking of is some kind of a, just on a single page form. Something that just outlines it in big blocks, so you could easily scribble down as you're going through each section. So it would follow this format, but it would be, and I'm not sure how it's best to capture it in real time at the meeting. But something that you could just scribble in a couple of words in each block for a section and be able to capture it. That would then allow you to verbally go back and summarize, okay, we looked at this, these are the concerns we had in looking at this section. That's all. It would be more of a aid, I'd say during the meeting.
Okay.
And, and we wouldn't do anything else with these, we'd throw these out after we get out of the meeting, but it would just help in, in summarizing.
Well, you know, you had that cheat sheet, remember?
The flow chart?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just still do and I still use that.
Yeah, but the flow chart really, we, we should probably have that with, with a little bit greater detail.
Yeah.
So that you have a set of sheets.
Right.
Now, you, you might be wasting a little bit of paper, but it would save, it would save a lot of time. If you had each individual section.
Right.
And as you went through it, you could say, okay, uh, not applicable would be a choice, you just circle not applicable.
Right.
And if, but then if there were concerns about that, you could write it down.
Okay. I didn't realize that John Alexander did the cheat sheet thing before. I thought about doing that in preparing something by section. That I would hand out to the board of, I think these apply, you know, um, eight hundred dot sixteen, eight hundred dot seven, eight hundred. And, and kinda pick out the portions of land use ordinance. The reason I've not done that is I'm, I'm trying not, I don't wanna pre-buy you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so that's why I've not done that. But if I did it and this is a baseline, consider this. But anything else you wanna cover, we could do anything else or talk about anything else too.
But why not just start with everything in there?
We could, we could and then.
For, for a project, you could start with everything and just cross out the ones.
Right, right, okay.
On a ad hoc basis.
Okay, so we've talked about this a lot. Let, let me kick around Orion and let me try between the two of us, let's put out something that we think might work. I've got some ideas, you've got some ideas, let's get together and.
If you've got something in the archives from Bill Napower, um, he, he had a form like this.
I know.
Have you seen it?
Did he? What, I've never seen it.
It was just an Excel spreadsheet, he just checked a box.
Oh, yeah.
And um, it, it didn't carry through with ordinance updates, um, so um, no.
No, I'm not saying he did it exactly, I mean, it's just there's another concept there that we have worked with before that.
Yep.
Um, I've, I was familiar with and I thought, I seem to recall it was more than just, you know, it was check boxes, but then he would plug in. You know, basically comments, you know, like, you know, here's something that I, you know, offer his perspective on it.
Yeah.
You know, like why we might pay attention or shouldn't pay attention. But it's up to you guys, why don't you guys work on it and.
So um, and I, I'll send you an example from Brunswick, which is a pretty good, pretty good um. They, they do a pretty good job with it, but in, in that, so this document and what I'm proposing is. You'd receive it because it would be a complete application and then the sections that I think need focusing on, I could put a comment that I recommend to the board. To focus on these sections. That I can do.
Kinda like that Joe. Just a spreadsheet that has all the sections from the like table of contents in the land use ordinance?
Yeah, and it was, it was a very different form, I mean, it was, it was same concept.
I, I do that sometimes, I've, I've got multiple columns here and what I did is I put it inside plastic sheet protectors and I use a crayon pencil. To go through each week, then I just erase it and start over for the next month. So I, I've done that sometimes too, trying different things. So, yeah, okay.
Whatever works.
Yep, so let's play with some of those things and, and see what we could do.
Um, yeah, I, I personally would love to have spent less time reviewing minutes and finding the fact.
Spent a lot of time this past month.
Yeah, it's, and I, you know, again, when this last one went through, I went back all the video and everything.
And you know, we, I was working against the clock, I wanted to kinda get this into the board so we could get done with it. And then the ZBA portion can go on for it and what you'll be receiving from me is a higher quality than, than that.
Yeah, and there certainly, there's no uh, fault intended Orion, please don't take it that way.
No, no, no.
We appreciate what you did, it's a very tedious process and it was the first time we're all learning, so no, there's no criticism certainly directed.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Nothing more than usual. Nothing more than usual.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
No, actually, you, yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Joe Ryan. It was remarkable, but it was like so thorough that.
Yeah.
You know, it was like unlike anything we'd ever seen before.
It's a lot easier when you have that baseline of all that detail to go through and compare it too, and if there's a couple little tweaks or something.
Right.
So, no, that was, that was great.
Okay.
I, I, again, I'm just concerned about the efficiency of how we do this in the future. I don't know that anybody wants to spend a lot of time.
Certainly they wanna do three months hence.
No, no.
Well, hopefully, hopefully we can get to a situation where at the min, at, at the next meeting, everyone will have reviewed it. They'll have made their comments and we can just make a memo, or I guess a general question, have you had time to review and make any amendments? And um, we can have a sign off that the day before you're, you're done with your edits or something. Like we can put a deadline to review the findings of facts in that a way at the meeting, we can confidently come into it saying, we've reviewed it. We're okay with it and then it's simple going forward.
I, I, I've not, I've not found any of the neighboring towns that have finding of facts available.
I know.
I don't know if they do them or not, but.
I think if you.
Cause I was trying to look for examples.
Um, so I know Will said that Camden does do them.
They do.
Now how they post them, where they archive and where they keep them, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um. But generally those ride with the application, so I don't even know if we would post them online. I think just the draft would be posted and then it would be kept.
And so we would just store these in the paper file with the applications?
Yep, they would ride with the application. And that's the other item I gotta worry about is how do we housekeep? So I think I'll have probably one binder uh, that's keeping all of them so that if we wanna pull, we got all the findings of facts pulled. And then another one that rides with the application as it goes. So there's a few items logistically I gotta figure out in the office.
Okay, so why doesn't everybody kinda cook on that for the next month here?
Yep.
We gotta come up with something that works. I don't wanna spend a lot of time tonight, but could you just go to the parking folder quickly?
Yeah.
Um, and I just want, I'm just gonna show you what I stuck in there. Uh, it's, no, 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 I'm sorry, go to.
Point, listen to her.
Yeah, go to eleven three, eleven three and parking, there you go. Uh, if you could just open those two. Uh, open the, yeah, spreadsheet first. So what I tried to do is I just captured out of our parking ordinance. The sections that I believe were relevant for the planning board to consider changing.
Good.
And so again, this is the baseline, if you guys feel differently, look through the parking ordinance, find it. So these are basically the requirements that are in there that are related to zones, areas. And what the parking regulations are and that's what I think the planning board's gonna look at. I'm not gonna worry about enforcement stuff and. Um, you know, vehicles and pedestrian walkways, the police department can take care of that or the planning department. Okay, so you can look at that, that's in a spreadsheet. Other document, please?
What is this Joe?
That, those were the sections extracted out of the parking ordinance that I believe are relevant for the planning board to review. And consider modifying.
Right, it's on a spreadsheet on the.
It's on a spreadsheet. Now, this document is really tiny and hard to see, but what I did is down on the bottom there. If you wanna just, yeah, blow that up. Down on the bottom, this is what the parking ordinance that we just looked at. Defines, it defines one hour parking, it defines two hour parking, it defines parking not permitted and it defines overnight parking. Those are the only areas that are defined in the town. Most of them are in the Harbor Village. And so the orange is overnight parking allowed, the orange blocks, red is no parking, which is the entrance to the park. Uh, blue I think is two hour parking, yes, and uh, brown is one hour parking. So there.
Joe, you say one hour parking not permitted, two hour parking, did you mean to?
Oh, I'm sorry, permitted, yeah, not, yeah.
Okay.
Take the not out, yeah, I'll fix that. Okay, that's actually permitted. And then Summer Street is defined. And then outside of the village, the other, only other areas that the parking ordinance speaks to is the fire stations there. The town hall, town office and the fire station, that's out in West Rockport too, that's not on this map.
No, so uh.
So most of it's focused in the village and that's it. It doesn't talk about any other streets in the town, nothing.
Wait, wait, Joe, what is this article seven that I've got that says Rockport schedule roads current?
Oh, no parking during the winter? Which one?
Is that what this is? All these twenty-three streets?
Okay, I missed that.
You know, there's.
And what, oh wait, is that speed limits though?
They talk about speed limits.
Oh, it's speed limits, that's why. It's only speed limits and that's not our business, that's the police chief.
Yep.
Okay, so none of this.
None of that's about parking.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. So anyway, take a look at those two things, um, we'll talk about this more next time.
Oh, wait a minute. Parking on Summer Street, right next to the post office.
That's the only place, yeah, fifteen minutes, yeah.
So parking is allowed on every street except the ones you, you know, there's some conditions on those, okay.
And then there's.
I was confused.
Right, in the table I included, there's something that bans winter parking at night also. That's it. Okay, so think about that. Um, you know, Camden has almost, Camden has a lot of streets that they define specifically. With parking rules.
Well, I, I.
I don't know that we wanna get that detailed.
We do not.
No.
My general sense is the, the, what is the core issue about parking? It's public safety, right? Isn't that?
Public safety and availability of parking.
Availability, so you could go to.
Availability, okay.
Go to businesses.
Yeah, but on the vast majority of Rockport, it's, it's mostly about, does it make something unsafe? If there's parking allowed somewhere, is that fair?
On the street maybe.
On the street, yeah.
But in a parking lot, no?
Yeah, we don't deal with parking lots, except for the town owned parking lots. So my, my thought is, um, just because it's my, been my own observation in this area of, um, there are. There are places where there are, parking is allowed on both sides of the street, and if that happens, you know, right in the same place, nothing can get through. That's a problem.
One-way traffic only. Union Street's a good example.
Not even one, I mean, on a two-way street, if there's.
No vehicle can go through.
No, no vehicle going either way. And it's happening. It's happening right in my front, front of my house.
It happens often on, I mentioned Union Street, because it happens often on Union Street, especially if there's an event in this building or at the library. Parking on both sides, and you know how the street kinda bends.
Yep.
If a car is coming around the corner and there's a car coming towards them down the hill, they, there's not enough road for both vehicles.
Yeah. And and I would add.
Even worse elsewhere.
I would add, although this is gonna feel a little bit contentious in some ways, but. The more we have people that are not familiar with the town, bringing cars in here to park overnight. They are, and they're they're cramming in in more people in a location than it would be normal. And I'm referring specifically to a short-term rental situation where you get, you know, three or four cars showing up to park there. The only place they can go is on the street, and they're parking on both sides of the street, and nothing can get through. And that's putting me at, you know, my safety at risk in any other house on that street.
We, and we have a similar problem on Warrenton Street where it comes, where it intersects with Route one.
Yeah.
People, there's a, there's a rental place right on the corner there, and people will park right on that corner. And for somebody that's making a left-hand turn, has got traffic following them down that hill, oh, brother.
So I guess where I.
Just real quick, um, my computer's about to die.
A stop sign, but they they parked there anyway.
Well, that's illegal.
Joe, my computer's about to die. Do you want me to show anything else?
No, thank you.
Just gonna shut this up.
Where I'm going with this is these days, uh, we, don't we have the technology to allow us to map all the road widths?
We are getting there.
Okay, and and I'm just thinking, you know, maybe it's just a question of, you know, where the road is narrower than this, you know.
Does Mike have that? I mean, similar to what?
I mean, we have it. I'm I'm wanting a mapping system. We've got GIS, I just want it more robust.
Okay.
So we're working. I just got all the sewer shape files, so.
Then the DOT, Maine DOT, have all that data?
Uh, they've got it, um. They've got it. That's all I can really say on it. But.
All right, somebody's gonna get hurt pretty one of them.
Okay, so let's look at whether there's a way to categorize situations that arise that would. Rather than detail each street, it would up us, yeah.
That way you don't have to get into like this street at this area.
Right, right.
And, um, there's some ability to enforce something.
Okay, anything else? Other business? Okay, we're gonna talk about vice chair next month and, um, go from there.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Jeff, seconded by Tom, all in favor, four zero zero. Meeting is adjourned at eight oh eight.